Well, good afternoon and welcome to the December 16th session of the Board of Library Trustees of the Allen County Public Library. We are glad to have everyone here today. And let's begin with the call of the roll.
Certainly. Sharon.
Present.
Kent.
Present.
Jim.
Present.
Kent, I already did Kent. Martin.
Here.
Ben.
Present.
Paul.
And I am present.
Okay. With the exception of Paul, who indicated he will be coming, we're all present. Well, call for a motion to adopt the agenda. However, there was a Scrivener's error in item 12. It should read appointment of building corporation members, not officers. So with that as a correction, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt.
Pete is saying directors.
Say again?
Directors.
Directors. Ben corrected.
The correction is the correction.
Appointment of building corporation directors. Okay? Let's have a motion.
With that correction, so moved or second?
Sharon's first and Martin's second. Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, it passes. Let's move on to item number three, the approval of the minutes. And if there aren't any objections, can we take this as a group? Okay? May I have a motion to have approval of the minutes noted on your agenda of categories A, B, C, D, E, and F?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. David, you're up.
All right, thank you, Ben. In your packet are your financial reports and just a couple additional lines that had gone beyond benchmark, cleaning supplies, those purely were for the year spending for COVID-related items. And then the water and sewer expense, we had rate increases this year, but we also had a lot of increase in water usage. If you recall, one of the projects we did was the cooling tower, you know, for the main library. And then we've had some hot water problems up on the second floor. Those have led to increased usage. The line is in the red right now, but I want to, you know, still note that in the transfers, we're going to move some money and just in case the December bill comes in high. Other than that, no other lines were spending outside their benchmark. The main items we're discussing today, I'll bring in later, is the transfer of appropriation. Again, this is allowed by the state. Since we aren't asking for additional appropriations, it's just transferring between lines. And so there's some lines that I've included with that resolution number five that, you know, detail how I'm going to move the money around for the end of the year. And then the other one is the treasures bond. Again, that's a state requirement still. We have it for the minimum of $100,000 because, as I noted in the report, the main coverage for us is on the directors and officers policy that covers a $12 million, or I'm sorry, $10 million policy. So those are really the main items to discuss today, but like I said, we'll get to the appropriation transfers later.
Okay. Any questions on the financial report November as included in our packet? If not, can I have a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
And the second, Paul, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Thank you. The claims, David?
Claims, I'll circulate these around.
Anything exceptional?
Actually, it's a very small batch because the one we faxed earlier last week was the utility one. This one is only 79,000. It's ironic, there's over 180 checks in this, but the total check register is only around 79,000 because this time of year, it's all the memberships in the different areas, like the historical societies are $10, $15 memberships for the subsequent year. So lots of checks, low dollar amounts. So nothing really in here. The highest one, Ben, is 21,000 for part of the sensor monitoring, the gates and all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, let's have a motion to approve the claims as circulated.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. And they pass and they're being circulated. Now we're talking about some meaty stuff, the transfer appropriations within the operating funds.
Right, right. And in your packet, I've got some details in there. We're asking to move 873,000 between increases and decreases both. The main ones are ones that I've noted throughout the year in the treasures report, mainly putting money into the architectural engineering line for the facility master plan that's been going on, as well as the consulting line that was for the employee engagement survey. The largest one is a 280,000 addition into the HVAC line. What that is, is when we put in the new general ledger, we reclassified some of the expenses. That singly is the train service contract. That's an annual cost of around 280,000 that was being paid out of line three, let me see, 3607. Yeah. And so you'll see on the decrease, there's a $250,000 decrease there. It's merely shifting that expense to a more appropriate line. The other large ones are, of course, you know, the projects that we've been doing are in the HVAC area, like I said. Water, I mentioned, the rates and the usage have been high. COVID supplies, snow maintenance, I've kind of mentioned all year round. And then the computer maintenance, the 145,000 there is tied purely to the OCLC wise. We had a billing in November on that. That's for the subsequent year, so that's coming in this year to be paid. So that needs to have some funds to cover the cash outlay on that.
Thank you for the explanation. Can we have a motion then, the resolution of transfer appropriations within operating funds?
So moved.
Thank you, Gloria. And second, Jim, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
This is one of the resolutions by state that have to have all your signatures. I'll bring it around for your signature.
While you're walking around, talk about the treasures bond.
Yeah, treasures bond, as I said, this is still a state requirement that the library treasurer have a performance bond. The minimum we can get is $100,000 and that's what this is for. The, like I said, the main coverage for us is going to be always the director and officer's coverage at 10 million. So.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's bond? It seems to be in our self-interest.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That passes. David, any good and welfare?
No good thing you put that bond in place.
All right. We could sleep well tonight. Now let's get to the fun part of the meeting. Let's hear from Shawnee Library. Tanya?
My name is Tanya Frandl. I am the branch manager at Shawnee. I've been there for two years this January, so I've been there a COVID, basically. So I'd like to thank you for welcoming here to the big show. I feel like you're all celebrities. I've only seen you on camera. So I have a brief video just to give you an introduction into the Shawnee branch. So here it is. Hello, and welcome to this tour of the Shawnee branch of the Allen County Public Library. My name is Tanya Frandl and I'm the manager here. Let's take a look around at one of the most striking structures of the ACPL system nestled into the surrounding earth, the Shawnee branch of the Allen County Public Library. While uniquely beautiful, the Shawnee branch was built in 1973 and provides certain challenges that naturally coincide with an older, partially underground building. While some buildings may have the occasional leaky roof, here at Shawnee, when the wind is right and the rain is flowing, the walls invite nature in with rainwater and the occasional insect or clitoris, features that the Shawnee staff are well adept to handle. With a hidden entryway that is accessed via leaf-covered stairs, the Shawnee branch took a unique approach during the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure that patrons had access to materials while safeguarding staff from climbing up and downstairs all day. We introduced tableside material delivery. This feature was greatly appreciated amongst our patrons during the pandemic and still gets the occasional use, but the Shawnee branch is more widely known as the technology hub for our community. While traffic patterns have decreased as a result of pandemic, the number of patrons needing access to technology has held firm. From its inception, the Shawnee branch has always led the way in providing access to technology to the public. Patrons come to the library daily to check email, browse the internet, and play games. Beyond entertainment, however, our patrons come to Shawnee to get stuff done. The printers and copy machines are our most widely visited locations within the library, with important deadline-driven documentation sorting being top priorities. To say that the community's needs for computers, printers, faxing and copiers is voracious would be an understatement to say the least. This is where the Shawnee staff and branch come into play. When the COVID pandemic hit, it was the technology needs of our patrons that drew the greatest concern from our staff, a service that could not be met through tableside or curbside delivery. Knowing the needs of our community, the Shawnee branch was incredibly thankful to be one of three locations able to offer computers by appointment in June 2020 during the height of the pandemic. Before, during, and well after the pandemic, on a daily basis, not only do we provide important technology to patrons that otherwise might not have access, but the staff of the Shawnee branch provide assistance to help bridge the digital divide that very much still exists, especially in most patrons within Southside communities. While technology will continue to guide the future of the Shawnee branch, it's important to note that we're more than just computers and printers here. We are also known as the branch of horror. Our most popular collection is far and away our movie collection, and our most popular genre, horror films. I haven't quite been able to figure out what it is that draws the horror movie fans to the Shawnee branch. The trees that surround us, the somewhat poor lighting, I can't quite put my finger on what it is. But the next time you're looking for some grade A, or B, or C horror movies, we're happy to be your destination. We are actively looking for ways to build a better and stronger collection that will meet the needs of our community now and in the future. We have recently expanded our collection of television series, have been offering board games for over a year, and are one of three locations with circulating Wi-Fi hotspots. We are also proud to have the largest Spanish language collection outside of the main library. This collection helps meet the needs of the Southside's large Spanish-speaking population, as well as those interested in expanding their Spanish language skills. So here's the story of a lovely library with a staff that is motivated to meet the needs of the community in which it serves. These needs may be driven by searches for entertainment, learning, or productivity. Whatever your needs might be, the Shawnee staff are here to help any patron that walks down our steps and enters our doors. I'd like to thank K. Greg and Access Fort Wayne, of course, they did an amazing job. And my staff for being willing to be Brady Bunch squares. That has been a lifelong dream of mine, was to be a Brady Bunch square, so I can die now. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Did, I have a question. It goes back 40-some years, so it's well before you were there. But did Shawnee at one time provide space to, for birthday parties and movies? Because I seem to remember taking our kids there when they were seven or eight.
That sounds vaguely familiar. We have one staff member that's been there for, he just celebrated his 40th year at Shawnee and with the ACPL, and I think he's mentioned that before, that, yeah, we used to have a celebration.
It was quite an experience.
Yeah. Yep.
I had a question. You mentioned this was really a tech hub for the community.
It is, yeah.
Size-wise, I know you've only been there for COVID, but did your staff tell you, is that ticking up? Is that increasing over the last five, 10 years?
The technology needs?
Yes.
According to my one staff member that's, again, been there for 40 years, this has been a pretty consistent need amongst the Southside community, but it's definitely a need that has not diminished. I would say if anything, it's increased. The digital divide is a real thing. It still, it still very much exists. And the people that come to Shawnee, they don't have access to the internet at home or they don't have printers, obviously aren't able, and it's a desert in the Southside community in terms of places where they can go to fit those needs, so we're very happy to be available for them. So I'd say it's held firm, if not increased. That seems fair.
Is it, is it safe to assume that you have been involved and engaged by the architectural and engineering firm that is currently under contract with us?
I would say on the same level as other branch managers. I mean, I'm definitely very interested in what they will have to say, and I look forward to that, but I'd say on the same level as everyone else, as other managers.
What level is that? I mean, are they actively seeking you out for your insight?
Yes, they, I mean, they definitely, they asked staff, managers and all staff for their feedback, and I definitely gave that regarding kind of some of the limitations of our building.
So you're comfortable with the level of feedback that you're providing?
Yes, yes, I think it's fair.
Any other questions? Tanya, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very well done.
Appreciate it.
Very clever. Okay, let's move a good segue to our Capitol Projects Committee report. Marty?
All right, yeah, let's segue to that. Given Paul's good question there. Today's message is pretty, pretty simple. The final draft recommendation options are being finalized. I think the leadership is working with facility master plan coordinators here to get that in shape for us. We have a very important meeting on January 5. What time is that again?
3:00.
3:00 here, where it's a special board meeting just for that purpose alone, for the presentation, answer questions for everyone. So please, 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 board members be here for that. If you can't, please let us know now, because we really want to try to make sure we have everybody here for that.
And we encourage the public to?
Yes, of course. It's a board meeting as well, so the public is certainly welcome to attend. The January 5th presentation and a summary report, assuming it gets approved by this board, will be made available for public review and feedback. We're hoping to do a public feedback process in January and February. So the intent is to get as much feedback to this report as we can. There's going to be a live stream information sharing session on January 10 at 7:00 PM by our consultants, and we're hoping to have this ready with a final recommendation to this board on April the 7th. That's my report.
Good report. Questions? Okay, well, thank you. We will accept the report as presented. The nominating committee?
Yes, we got together and determined that we would like to keep this current board members, as far as yourself as president, and Sharon Tucker as vice president, and myself as secretary.
To retain the officers as we currently have?
Currently, yes.
For a period of the year. Okay? Can we, that's a committee report, so it doesn't need a second, but all those in favor, is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure I'm not, Sharon, I'm sorry, Gloria, you were a little quiet for me. So does everybody staying the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And part of that, Martin, is we know you guys are getting ready. We are getting ready to go through a big transition with our outlook that we have in our Capitol, and so we felt that it would be better for us and for our public if we kept all the seats in place with Ben's leadership, since he's been so involved in what's been going on.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then all in favor of the committee report as presented, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Well, if elected, I will serve. If nominated, I will run. Lyndon Johnson sort of. Okay, now we get to the staffing table.
That will be Lorraine.
All right, in your packets is the authorized staffing table for 2022. It includes the approved compensation changes from November 18th board meeting. Those changes comprise of the 4% COLA increases for all staff, the 4% increase in the PONFX pay grades, and the adjustment in the outlier positions based on that salary survey conducted. In addition to those compensation changes from last month, we seek approval on the following position adjustments and additions. The first being a Director of Community Partnership and Programs. This was formerly the Director of Strategic Initiatives. That will be vacated by Denise on February 2022. It is the same pay grade, so M4 pay grade. Under the Executive Director, the Director of Community Partnership and Programs will serve on the senior staff team and will lead the efforts in fostering key relationships in the community and overseeing and coordinating a variety of programs and partnerships aimed at meeting the needs of our patrons. The second position is the Chief of Public Service Operations. This is a position adjustment for Kim Bolin, who's currently the Director of Public Services. It is the same M4 pay grade. And this position would plan, organize, and administer libraries' public services operations and activities at the main library and branch libraries, and serve as in charge in absence of the Executive Director. It would also oversee the facility master plan process. The Director of Communications is a title change for Stephanie Smith, who's currently the Director of Community Engagement. No change in pay grade, just a title change to better reflect the role, duties, and focus. The next position is an Employee Experience Coordinator. This was formerly the Training Specialist role that was vacant when James left in November of 2021. It's the same pay grade. It would plan, this position would plan, develop, and implement the internal library experiences that support employee and volunteer productivity, training, and overall engagement. The next position is the only addition into our staffing table. It's a Youth Services Specialist for the Grabell branch. There's one correction, it's actually an A3 pay grade. Youth Services is an A3 pay grade. And it's an addition to respond to community needs for youth programs and services at our fifth highest circulation branch. The final position I wanted to include in there so you knew, but it is a grant-funded position. It's a Role and Center Assistant position, 20 hours a week, grade A2 pay grade. So the action requested is to approve that staffing table for 2022.
Okay, can we place this in the form of a motion a second, then we could discuss as appropriate?
So moved.
Thank you, Gloria. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion, please?
I just want to make a comment. I think that the addition of the Director of Community Partnerships and Programs is key to the future. I think that's, we've been talking for several years, and it's been happening, I know, in various capacities on that end a bit, but I think having a director that's really focused on how do we partner in the community with all the other entities, service agencies, human service organizations, those types of things is key. So I'm just really excited that that's coming to the top here today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Paul, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, so the first one, that Kent just mentioned, that's an open position.
It will be vacated when Denise leaves.
Right.
Yep.
And then the Chief of Public Service Operations, Kim, so that is a change in salary as well?
Yes, yeah. It's the same pay grade, but it's not a significant change in the actual salary.
So it's, okay, the salary increase is solely related to the change in grade?
Yes, the, yeah, the increase in duties, yep.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's the only question I had.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Thank you, Lorraine. Good work putting this together.
Thank you, Lorraine.
All right. Let's move now to item 11 on our agenda, the proposal to remove late fees for migrants.
Thank you so much, Ben. So this is a conversation that we have been having all year, and I am really thrilled to bring this proposal to you for your consideration. My recommendation, our recommendation is that effective January 3rd, 2022, cardholders under the age of 18 would no longer pay late overdue fees on returned items. That would also include waiving the existing late fees for youth that are currently on their books, which is about $65,000. It's important to remember that youth cardholders would still stay financially responsible for lost or damaged items. Lost items are billed at 30 days overdue, that's what happens currently, and library cards are blocked from further checkouts once charges exceed $15. And as far as the justification, I feel like we've had a lot of discussions about that, but I just want to emphasize that many public libraries across the country are going fine-free in an effort to improve access, particularly for patrons who are disproportionately impacted by overdue fines. I think you can safely say that youth in particular are disproportionately impacted by overdue fines. They are often at the mercy of their parents or their caregivers to get back to the library. It's also, I think, really important to remember, we talk about the kids who lose access because they have overdue fines, but we also need to have a conversation about the kids who never get library cards because their parents are afraid of the potential of getting library fines. Our staff literally hears that every day from parents who just aren't in a position where they can accept that kind of financial risk, so the kid goes without a library card. I think it's important to remember that in Allen County, we have the ZIP code that has the highest level of poverty in Indiana, with the 50% level of residents living in poverty. What an overdue fine can be an inconvenience or an annoyance for some families, for some it's a true barrier to library service. Once someone owes a late fine, they can be less likely to visit the library again, and that fear results in them not borrowing the items that they need. Again, these are comments that our staff hears routinely from children and their parents. I included a list of all the Indiana public libraries that are already fine-free. That includes 81 libraries. Other major library systems around the country are regularly announcing that they are going fine-free, including New York and Chicago. Chicago's been fine-free for a few years, and they have found that any concern about not getting items back has not happened. In fact, the reverse has happened. They saw a 240% increase in returned materials when they got rid of fines. And many libraries have elected to eliminate youth fines as that initial step in eventually going fine-free. And I also, again, wanted to stress that no fines does not mean no responsibility. Youth are still expected to return those items, and they'll be held responsible if they fail to do so. Currently, patrons receive either five email notifications or three telephone notifications for overdue materials. As far as the financial impact, you can see the trajectory of extended use fees, fine fees income these past few years. It has gone down. I think there are several reasons for that. One main reason, I think, is the predominance of electronic resources and the popularity of them, and electronic resources don't have fines or fees. Dave has budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year to bring in approximately $220,000 in extended use fee revenue. That is for all cardholders, not just adults, not just youth. And I wanted to share that 20% of our cardholders are 17 years and younger, so you can sort of do some proportions and math about what that might mean as far as that projected revenue that Dave thinks will bring in fines and fees. We have data for the past two years on how much of the fine income we brought in is just by youth and just for overdue items. So not lost things, but overdue. And in 2020, youth cardholders paid $22,000 and change in late fines, and so far this year, they have paid a little over $26,000 in late fines. Of course, we did have that amnesty event back in the summer.
Are there any questions?
I just want to comment, I appreciate the amount of information you have provided us as board members. It clarified a lot of issues that I think we should have to have discussion about.
Can we have this in the form of a motion in a second so we can continue discussion?
Sure. I'll make the motion.
Question, Ed?
Just the motion?
Just, the motion would need to be to accept the elimination of youth fines proposal and the changes in the circulation policy and schedule of fines and fees. That's what we would need to have in the form of a motion.
Before I make that motion, because I will make the motion for you, and I do support it, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to, for a friendly amendment to it, which answers my question. Is there, is there a reason why we just went to age 18? Would it be too much of a financial impact if we moved fines all together?
I love the way you're thinking. I'm going to look to our CFO there.
Well, you can do either. I think we were looking at using, this is a first step, to see how the fine-free proposal would run. Looking at a potential of, well, a maximum of 65, but looking more like 23,000 being the amount we'd have to cover is a lot different than the 220,000. So I'd prefer, my preference would be to try and do the youth proposal first, see how that goes this year, because there's a lot of different dynamics that go into this. You know, at first, when I first heard about fine-free years ago, it's like, well, you're going to lose all of them, well, the material's going to walk out the door and everything. But they're finding that that isn't the case, and so we could find ourselves having to replace less material because people are more willing to bring it back because they aren't facing those extended use fines. So seeing the interaction between the library material purchases, the fine revenue loss, et cetera, I think will tell us a lot this year, so, I mean, that would be my recommendation.
No problem. Then I'll make a motion to move per the request read by Su, I can't find my paper Susan, so I'm sorry. I'll make a motion, if you'll read that request again, that'd be my motion.
Sure. It would be a motion to accept the elimination of youth fines proposal and the changes in the circulation policy and schedule of fines and fees.
So move.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I will make a comment, I guess. As Susan knows, I was skeptical of this when she first raised it some time ago. However, I can be swayed by facts, and I think, and I'm happy to get as much as we did. So I am going to support this, and, but frankly, I do want to see reports to make sure we understand it. And it is, it's part of the day, part of what Dave said. I frankly would assume we're going to lose some material, but obviously it says here that if it becomes lost, and I guess it's after 30 days, and we can renew for a long time now, and then 30 days after that, it's lost. It does go on there, it does get, no, you do have to actually return it or pay for the book item. That makes a big difference to me, so I can support what you're recommending, Susan.
Thank you. Any other comments or observations?
Is there any difference? Because the way the policy's kind of written is it's, in some places it's under the age of 18, and in some places it's 17 and under in our narratives and in the policy. I feel like that should be uniform, however we state that, just to, I would rather see it be 17 and under, just to clarify that 18-year-olds are not included in that. Because they would transition at that point, just to make sure it's clear.
We can do that.
But I support it in that sense, and I have same concerns as Marty on that end of it, but I think that the data will be important for us to understand and back data on, you know, what has that age category typically lost that we've had to replace, and then moving forward, how do we track that as well, and what does that look like in comparison as we evaluate all this, so.
I think it's important to remember, particularly with youth materials, things that are replaced, they're not always just lost. Sometimes they're dropped in the bathtub, sometimes they're chewed on, sometimes they're scribbled on.
Yeah, I'll never forget the friend that called me because his child had put a book in the laundry basket.
Yeah.
And he just dumped his laundry basket in the washer to wash it, and I said, well, clearly you don't sort. And he just laughed, and I said, well, you're going to have to pay for that book. So I get it.
That's clever. All right, any other, yes Paul?
What expense, if any, is there in collecting late fees? You know, you don't send anybody to collections.
No, we use a firm that is like a soft collection. They make multiple contacts with the individual. After a certain period, we send these to that entity, and, you know, they make the soft-touch approach to them. We don't, like, take them to court or anything like that.
So what's the expense associated with that, roughly, on an annual basis, that you can basically pull out of the, out of the?
I'd have to double-check on that, Paul, but I know we add a $10 fee usually for a referral, and I don't know, Mike, you're more familiar with this, is that correct?
That's correct. If they're over $35, they're sent to the unique company who does the soft communications, and we do pass that fee that they charge us onto that customer. And that's only for those individuals that are adults or older, so that will affect these accounts anyway.
So of this $220,000, there's really nothing that can be subtracted out of that in terms of expense of collection?
No, because those were strictly the overdue fees, the, like, we get $65,000 in another section of the revenue model that is for lost and collection fees, when people actually pay those overdues.
Maybe I'm not stating it correctly, but I don't know how else to state it. I mean, is there any expense that can be deducted from this $220,000 that?
Do we save money? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Do we save?
Are we saving any money? If, I'm in fa, fully in favor of waiving them for everybody, frankly.
Right.
I don't think we should have fines for.
I think what?
I'm disappointed that you didn't push yours a little harder.
Well, we haven't called the vote yet.
True.
I mean, if you waived it for everybody, we wouldn't be referring accounts to unique.
Right. I'm just trying to understand what that saving would be, just a wild guess.
Right.
Probably not much, but.
Probably not much because, again, it's passed on to the customer. We don't pay that.
Yeah, and I understand the intent of this with the 17 and under, but their parents are probably paying for that too, so.
Sure.
Talking about a concern for people that can't afford this, that was my question, but I'm definitely in favor of, and I said this before, that I think we should just remove the fines completely, like, and the information was very good that you provided, appreciate that.
Yes Sharon?
So, in our, when we forgave the fines earlier this year, what was that amount?
I don't know.
No.
I'm not sure.
That's, I'm sorry, I know you weren't, I, it just came to me while we were talking.
Yeah.
But that's fine, I figure that, you know, I just say let's.
Because that was both overdue fines and the late, you know, or the amounts owed on lost material.
It was significant.
Yeah.
Around $300,000?
I don't know. Mike, do you have anything on that, or?
I thought it was closer to $400,000, but the reality is, this is one of the most generously-funded government entities in this area, in my opinion, and I think we have an opportunity to do it, and it would be a very positive thing.
Well, and then we don't have as much, we still have some impact on staff, but it's not as much impact of staff's time with tracking all that, so.
It's a really good point to make.
Yep.
A really good point.
Well, there's a motion on the table and a second. Is there any other discussion or friendly amendments? Not seeing, hearing none? All those in favor of waiving as discussed, please signify by aye.
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 Posed by nay? Well, we're on the road.
We are on the road. Thank you so much. This is really important. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the appointment of building corporation directors. In your packet, you should have received a letter that was sent by Susan to the existing directors, Alan Grinsfelder, Mike Horton, Tim Goshev, Janice Codey, and Commissioner Beck, asking if they would consider being re-elected for a one-year appointment. Is there, I'll entertain a motion for that approval, and then we could discuss it.
So move.
And the second?
Second.
Thank you Sharon. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay?
Okay. We have a building corporation representative. Good. Let's move now to your report.
I will, and I'm going to defer to Kurt Witcher with a late-breaking, very exciting announcement.
He just stepped out.
No! Kurt!
Back to you Susan.
Back to you Susan, okay.
Yeah, back to you.
That was a great tease, right? Because it is a really exciting announcement.
Now they're alive, that's a good show.
I gotta, yeah, the show's got to keep moving. Well, let's get to my written report, a few highlights from that. Make sure and take a look at the front page of the perspective section of the Journal Gazette this Sunday, because it's going to be about the best books of 2021, as thought of by the ACPL staff, including a few recommendations from me. Our winter reading program, we've got winter reading pro, we got reading programs for all seasons here at the ACPL. It will begin on January 1st, and there'll be a big push for that, and we have set a community reading goal of a million minutes. And I wanted to give a report back on the open enrollment season. That was November 28 through December 11th, and Lorraine and her HR team did an amazing job with the education and promotional pieces, and they offered a lot of office hours when employees could come in and receive personalized assistance. And in regards to the newly offered narrow network option, I believe we had six employees sign up for it. Kurt?
Yes?
I teased your appearance and your special announcement.
Thank you Susan. My apologies for not being here.
We did not rehearse that, obviously, yeah.
So not surprising to anyone in this room, I don't believe, as I had a urgent call from the construction manager who's actually on property. So, we can finally say with a great deal of certainty that we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not an oncoming train. So in consort with Susan and Stephanie and others, we do have a, an opening date, a couple of soft opening dates for the Rowland Center. We have really, it's been a team effort. The ACPL team has really worked hard, and you all know some of the formidable challenge we've had with supply chain issues, major supply chain issues, and then major work and workmanship issues. A couple of staff have commented, I thought they were done with heavy construction, and as you walked in today, you may have walked by lots of noisy impact hammers, lots of noisy rails being affixed to walls, et cetera. It took some extraordinary efforts on the part of a number of people around this table to convince the architectural firm and the construction managers that we really were serious about this being an awesome draw for the community, an awesome destination for this city, for Northeast Indiana. So Stephanie did put together a really impressive list of soft openings. The first will happen on Friday, January 7th, and the second set of soft openings will be on Saturday, January 8th. And our intention is to officially open for walk-in business from library patrons, interested others, visiting people on holiday, whomever, to actually experience the Rowland Center. I have to put my, tip my hat to our two Lincoln librarians who have spent just an extraordinary amount of expertise and time crafting the virtual, visual and virtual displays, as well as the physical displays. It's really going to be an impressive space. We have conducted a number of hard hat tours for VIPs and other interested parties over the last 60 days. I'm smiling widely because to a person, each one of them have said, this is amazing. They caught the vision of the visuals and how you can create your own journey, create your own experience, and they caught how nicely our Lincoln librarians married that to physical artifacts. Never since the Lincoln Museum closed in 2009 have this many Lincoln collection artifacts been on display at one time. I invite you to look for Stephanie's invitation to come to one of the soft openings. It really has been a neat experience planning this, and a test of dedication and fortitude in executing this, and now it's wonderful to announce to you that we have arrived at the beginning, at the beginning of an awesome asset to this community's experience. And I really think it will draw people, not just from our schools, which we're so excited about, not just from our community, which we're really dedicated to, but really will draw people from around the country who have interest in Lincoln, who have interest in Civil War, who have interest in this amazing leader who had one official year of education and still is the most read, the most researched, and the most published president in our country's history. So my thanks to you for your patience and your perseverance through all of this, and I hope you join me and the team here at ACPL in our excitement for being able to say, we're going to open for real in the first full week of January. Thank you so much. Happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Applause, yeah. Yes.
Sheer presentation has me on the edge of my seat to go.
Thank you Kurt. A few more announcements, none that are as exciting and palpable as that. We wanted to ask a question of our trustees. So every month, you get this beautifully put-together monthly managers' report, and I was speaking with our managers about how to make this the most effective and useful for all of you, and how to make it the most interesting, quite frankly, and we wondered if you might be amenable for us moving from a monthly format to a quarterly format. We feel like it could be a much more richer document that would save the time of the people putting it together and of the reader.
Is this just being created for us?
Yes.
By all means. They should not be, yeah.
Does anyone disagree? Why daily?
No, I really enjoy it. I usually don't print it out to bring, but I always read it, and, but quarterly, it gives people time to do maybe something a little bit more in-depth without feeling like they have to do something that week, that month to fill it in. I understand that, so yeah. 100% quarterly.
It's been really, it's been really helpful as the strategic plan has been implemented to understand how it's linking to everything. So I mean, I've really appreciated that linkages, and they all do a really good job of that, and I know Denise helped lead that effort as well in connecting some of that stuff. But I'm really thankful that the branch managers have all adopted the connection to all of that, because it just, it brings it to light for where we need to be to understand how it fits in. So that's great.
Great.
I also wanted to share, as you know, code red protocols are in place, and we have put a temporary pause on indoor programs, and we have temporarily reduced hours, but I want to emphasize for anybody watching at home, our libraries are still open. We are open for browsing, we are open to check out materials, computers and Wi-Fi use, study rooms, meeting rooms, those are all available to use. However, if you're not comfortable coming in, we still offer curbside service at all of our locations. And finally, speaking of Denise, this will be the last board meeting Denise is with us. She will be retiring, the official date is February, but her last day in the library will be January 7th. So on Friday, January 7th, we will be having a reception in her honor, and all of you are invited. It will be in the theater lobby from 1:00 till 3:00, so we can bid her farewell, and thank you for her extraordinary service that she gave us in some really interesting and challenging years. So thank you very much, and you will be missed greatly.
Is Denise staying in town?
Yes.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes.
Anything else Susan?
That's all from me.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Item 14?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Kind of went over the code red thing pretty quickly there. Just, I want to understand the reasoning behind, yes, we're open, but we also are reducing our service to the community. What was the, in reading your email, it seems like the primary reason was staffing concerns?
Correct.
Are we having staffing?
We are.
How is that, just the code red triggered immediate staffing issues, or how does that work?
It was going on before. It is accelerated now with the number of staff who are quarantined, either because they are sick themselves or there's an exposure. And it is a moving target, it can go up and down. Right now, we are at a pretty good spot, but a few days ago, we had, I think, five people out at once, right? And it can have a real ripple effect.
Okay. So you're not tracking the number of vaccinations, is that correct, the percentage of people that are vaccinated?
Not formally. We did offer wellness points for any full-time employee who got vaccinated and participated in our health plan, but we don't have any formal tracking, no.
Do you have any wild guesses to how many people are vaccinated?
From some surveys we took a few months ago that were voluntary, my wild guess is that we are similar to Allen County as a whole, which is a little over half.
Yeah.
Wasn't, when you did that, that was like a month ago, right? And your information came back, it was just barely over 50%, right?
I think it was about two months ago, but yes, just barely over 50%.
I know my staff, and I have a much smaller staff than you do, but we have several people that have been, we've seen an uptick in exposure and actual cases in, on my team, so we've initiated the masking and as much as we can, too, so I get it.
I just think we need to be very cautious and careful and deliberate when we're reducing services to the community.
I agree.
I thought it was a little bit quick, but it is what it is.
Any other questions or observations? Who's gonna handle the retirement recognition?
I think you do typically, right?
I do.
I believe so.
Last year, Ben, for context, we did just read through the list and give their years of service, just as a way of celebrating each one of them.
All right. I have that here. I apologize.
And we hadn't done this in the past. A lot of, we've had retirements in the past, and throughout the years, they kind of retire, and I think last year, we just said, let's make sure we recognize the people who've retired in the year and give us so many years of service.
I remember saying that, I didn't remember that's...
I don't know that we officially...
Thank you. All right, well...
Your list is much shorter than mine.
I'm much shorter than you are. As a preface, we'd like to recognize and sincerely thank our 2021 retirees. We appreciate their years of loyal service. If there are any with us today, please stand to be recognized. But starting off with 31 years, Jan Oatman in the Department of Children's Services. Mark Uber, 26, at 26 years at the Aboit Branch. Evan Davis, 20 years, Business Science and Technology. Evan was a reporter for the newspaper prior to...
He was on the editorial board.
Yeah. Maria Astorga, 18 years, Environmental Services. Deborah Stevens, 16 years in genealogy. Eileen Haskell, 16 years at the New Haven Branch. Steve Sensak, 15 years, Information Technology Services. And Josette Jordan, 15 years in events management. Thank you all again. We appreciate your loyal years of service to this facility, and hopefully you'll stay in touch and check out a book once in a while. Are any of the retirees here? No? Okay. All right. Well, that moves us then to new business. Are there any items of new business that should come before this body? Seeing, hearing none, let's move to public comment. Is anyone from the public here that wishes to comment? Well, all that being said, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay? Thank you very much. By the way, have a Merry Christmas, a Happy Healthy New Year.
Thank you.
And we have an executive session.
Starting right away.
In a few moments.